All right, we're gonna call to order the regular meeting for the Norwell Community School Board, November 25th, with a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? We have one addition to action items. We need to designate a signatory for closing documents for the administration building. If we could have a...
I'll make a motion to approve that addition.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, on favor, right hand.
Oh, wait.
I'll second.
Yes.
Just because of that.
Yeah, I've heard, yes. So you're just adding it as an agenda item.
Well, but still, it's not.
It's adding it as an action item that we'll talk about at the end of the meeting.
Oh, right, right, right.
All right. I think that was a five-zero. Moving on to the regular meeting minutes from the meeting on November 11th, 2025. There's no questions I make, a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, right hand. Those opposed, five-zero. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, this is very quick, but I just wanted to put it in the agenda and just make note of it. We've just, we've been doing a lot with facility improvements over the last six years. And, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about our bond issuances and all this. And I think people that just might be casually listening might, it might sound like we're being, you know, possibly irresponsible with how we're doing our finances. And just want to make sure we point out that through all that we've been doing, Norwell has maintained for long-term credit rating, that's changes that may happen, a double A-plus long-term rating, but an A-plus underlying debt rating with an outlook that is staple. And that's, it's pretty important in talking to staple, there's a lot of school districts that have actually been downgraded. And so we, there's 28 school districts that are rated above us. That's mainly because of their diversity and their tax bases. But there's 132 school districts that are rated below us, with again, some having dropped their credit rating. So again, not wanting to make a big deal about this and all that, I just thought it was important to make sure that we note that, that that's pretty important, that we're maintaining that credit rating.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to discussion items, Wells County Foundation, Norwell Education Foundation.
Yeah, so we had a really good meeting on November 21st. And so we had some of our booster club representatives were there. Kelby was there, Krista Iceberg was there, and Linda Linwell. And so we, just to give a quick history on this, we started talking about, probably four years ago, about having an education foundation. And so we connected with Tammy Slater at Wells County Foundation to find out that we had an account there since 2010 or 12, I think, and really just hadn't utilized it. So we kind of started that conversation, but even to this point, like, we really haven't done anything to expand. We've got a donate button, which is kind of confusing when you actually kind of drill down to get to it. So I really appreciated Tammy coming and just the conversation we had that day. The takeaway was, we just, we need to have something where, like, larger sums of money can be housed. So, and Corey, you've talked about this, if somebody wants to make, you know, a larger donation to, specifically to Norwell or to a program, like, where does that go, where's that set? And can they make that donation in confidence, right? That it's being housed somewhere, that they're gonna get that credit or that tax benefit from doing that. So I don't, we didn't necessarily finish it with answers, but we did talk about with Tammy, if we're gonna continue to do it there, like, we gotta have a better mechanism of explaining that to people than have it housed. One thing that did come out of the meeting, though, was one of our, one of the people that were there, booster club representatives work in Columbia City, and talked about how Whitley County is doing theirs, and kind of had the understanding that money was just directly going to the Whitley County Community Foundation, just automatically, and then working through the school more seamlessly. Well, I called Todd Finkwood, who's the CFO at the Whitley Community, Eric County Community, or Getholde School District, awful. And he said they restarted that way exactly where we're at now. And then two, three years ago, they actually started their own education foundation. I'm not saying that's where we need to go, but I think there's a bigger conversation to have there, like, and they still have the other community foundation, but he just felt like it was just kind of clunky how that was working. So I don't know where we want to go with it, but I think there's a, there's definitely a deeper conversation and probably enough untapped resource we have there, where there probably are community members that do want to donate to specific things, and we just kind of have a sloppy mechanism right now, I think, for people doing that. I don't know what you guys feel, but it feels like that to me, and seemed like it felt that way in the group when we had the meeting. So I don't know if you, I know, Corey, you've had thoughts about this in the past.
Yeah, my, the biggest thing for me is if, if I wanted to write a check to the baseball booster, like, I can figure out who it goes to and try to work that channel, but I know if I just call up the Wells County Foundation and say, "I want this five grand to go to cover this machine," or whatever, that it's pretty seamless. So that was the thought process behind getting it started, and knowing that there are probably some community members that say, "Hey, I need a tax deduction at the end of the year, and don't know who to call at the school, so send it to Wells County Foundation, I want it to go to Norwell." And they can get that tax write-off right away, or pretty seamlessly. So if there's a different or better way to do it, I'm okay with that. But as long as people understand you can go through the booster clubs, I just don't...
Right.
It's harder, in my opinion, so.
Right. Well, a part of the conversation was in Whitley County, same way, what Tammy talked about, like, it wouldn't be real efficient, like, some of these things that you approved at the board meeting today, like, the $250 donation or five, like, that doesn't make sense to be managing that, but it's for those bigger donations that people might want to make, or for raising money for, let's say, the baseball boosters or representatives, so let's just say they are interested in, over the next three years, having a hitting cage or barn or something like that, and there's a goal for that, and they get that set up, and it's publicized through the foundation, that you would have a place to go and do that. And so that's kind of what we talked about, and so just talked with Tammy about, do we need to have somebody as kind of a liaison to help with that, or is that just something that you guys can do? So it wasn't the end of the conversation, but it was a good conversation, so.
How many booster clubs do we have?
I believe, so every sport has one. And then we have band and show choir combined for one. And I, I think that's it, unless you guys know of others, I think that's it. Don't miss anybody, Kelly.
No, and not all of them have booster clubs, as they have, like, some of them have fundraising funds.
Okay, so not every sport is...
Probably just has a handful that have 501(c)(1).
Okay, so, you know, baseball does, football does, basketball...
Soccer boosters used to kind of do that, but it's kind of falling on hard times.
Yeah, so I think, I think to kind of coordinate that better, and that's kind of where we were going. Do you have, because one of the things that came up in the conversation was, somebody was talking about writing grants for that, and the grants keep getting denied. Well, Tammy explained that there was a time going way back in history where they got so many of those that they kind of couldn't keep up, and so the community foundation was more about doing things within the community. And then what they chose to do for schools was the Teacher Creativity Grant, which has been successful, and a lot of our teachers have gotten that. And so that's kind of where they pigeonholed that. And so we just need to figure out, because we've not, and that's why Krista was there, is because she put together some things where we can just do a better job of communicating that and advertising that, rather than just having a donate button at the top of our website, like, being a little bit more proactive. And that's what Whitley County said, too, as well, is that they had that account, but it wasn't being promoted, and it wasn't, it wasn't building, there wasn't any kind of fundraising effort in it. And so that's why they went on their own to do one. And I don't know that that's what we need to do, but I think that is probably the conversation. In the short term, though, like, for baseball, they're going to have, like, an account within our account there that people, if they start publicizing this, that they can directly donate for that hitting barn, if they want to do that.
Didn't we, like, have a whole board meeting about this, like, a couple of years ago, where we talked about using the foundation?
We did.
So is it just more like a, let's remind session?
Well, I think we just, we don't have anyone that's promoting it, and I don't think we're organized about it. And so it's just kind of random that, like Corey said, if somebody wants to do something, then they contact and they do it that way.
Well, and I think, I think if I remember the one you're talking about, that's when we found out we have an account.
Yeah, we actually have.
We had an account, correct.
So, yeah, yeah.
I think the point is to try to figure out how we can be more intentional about it versus just a, "Well, if you want to, you can do it."
Right.
"If you don't want to, that's okay, you can just give it to us and we'll figure it out," I guess. But I think it's more of, if it's this, it needs to go here versus, you know, like, we're not gonna stop the, like you said, the robotics donations, and, you know, all of those.
Yeah, what we don't want to have happen, though, too, I think, is, that's why I like the idea of a foundation, because I think community members and businesses can constantly be hit up by people. And I think we need to be a little bit more coordinated that way, because that can get kind of old, too, if you're constantly being hit up yourself.
I think it would be nice to kind of set up procedure and a policy. I don't know that it needs to be a board policy specifically, like, I think we'd like this, and then more of an administrative policy about how, if somebody comes to you, or somebody approaches a school, like, hey, if it's this, it needs to go this direction, if it's this, it needs to go, it can go this direction. Just so that way, it's, it's clear and the public's clear, and we can put it out for the public, and it can be on the website if it's this. I think that would be probably better and more transparent for what it is and why it goes to different directions.
Right, and for big projects, like, and for, and the thing that they inquire, that they just struggle with, is there's just so much that goes in, you know, whether it's costumes or different things, like, the equipment and that kind of piece of it. Whereas other groups, it may be like a, like for volleyball, maybe a surveying machine or whatever, I mean, just making stuff up, but, you know, I mean, like, it may be something like that, that you want to write a grant for, you want to have donations for, and you set that up. So, so one of the things that came up, too, is we were talking with Tammy, is like, if we had a list of things that were saying, "This is what, like, baseball team is trying to build within their program, that they need extra funding for, this is what band and show choir are trying to do, this is what..." So that people can see where this is going for, and what the plan is for it, rather than just saying, you know, "Will you donate $5,000 for whatever it might be used for?" Just like we were talking in the bond conversation, like, the more specific on what it is we're trying to get done is helpful, too.
And I think the policy would be good for those different clubs and booster clubs and sports organizations or activities to have a clear understanding of what the school's intentions are. If you're doing this, then this is where you need to approach, so. Any other questions on the board? Is there any other members of the public that wish to speak in regards to this topic? Okay, hearing none, move on to state championship street signs.
Kind of a nice transition, because I think, kind of what Roger's gonna present and talk about is, and he's coming from a standpoint of getting community involved in kind of funding this, I think. So, yeah, Roger, the podium's yours.
Thank you. It's a great, you know, prelude to what I need to say. I want to add one thing, and that is that having worked with the pool contributions, Lancaster Park and the Trail, the foundation immediately issues a tax deduction letter, an affirmation to the donor, and that's never been questioned, and their reputation is sterling. And so I hope that makes sense. If there's any credit for what I'm gonna present, it goes to Jim Wilson. If there's any blame, I'll take it. I called Jim Wilson after I learned that he was no longer gonna be the JV coach, and just thank him. He's had a heck of an impact, just a great, great influence on kids. Two days later, I get this text, "Where are our championship signs?" Well, I knew what that meant, and Jim wasn't just talking about basketball. And we began to explore that, I began to talk with Kelby, and we began to work then with the principal and superintendent, just to say, "Is this okay?" Because we didn't want to get out on a limb and then find it wasn't. I learned a couple of things. One is that the regulations on signs along state highways are, if it's in the right of way, it's gonna leave. And so as we began to look at this, we began to look at where could they be, and so on. I'll tell you upfront, my recommendation, and it's above my pay grade to make the decision, my recommendation is that we look at the soybean field just north of Lancaster School on One. It's property you own, it'd be next to the water tower. There are four signs we're talking about. Also, I think the pine trees out in front of the maintenance, new maintenance building, along there would be an awesome consideration. Don't have a suggestion for Ossean, because I don't know where we own land there and how we might do that, but we're getting enough signs, our recommendation is, we buy enough signs for three locations, okay? And there also ought to be something done to the home baseball dugout. That wall, as a team drives up, really ought to intimidate more than it does. Reputation could be strong. As we've gone about this, the design, I want to give credit to Kelby and Clint Gerber. Those additional dates beyond 13 are just to demonstrate that there's room for more years. I did talk to a certain basketball coach today and suggest that we could add 2026. Pretty easy right now, and didn't buy that. I want to tell you the support that was out there as we began to approach the community. We had contributions ranging from $500 to $300 to $500, $100 to $500. There were 27 contributors. They were comprised of parents and grandparents, former players, in-laws of Tom Osborne, who's a retired band director of quite reputation years back, a bus driver, you might guess who that is, teachers, former and present athletic directors, present and retired board members that gave some very substantial contribution, contractor for some buildings, including the middle school, a political leader, sportswear sales, and I'll just term the rest, super Norwell Nation fans. The cost that we're facing is about $7,800. That is if Adam and his crew do their thing. And I don't want to speak for Adam, but I think Adam can probably get this done. You see the list of materials and the cost. We've got four signs we need, marching band 2002, '05 and '06, baseball '03. And if you want to know about '07 and '13, there's somebody that can explain that better than me, standing here. Cheer 2007, growth basketball 2025. Thus far, we have raised $7,100, either in the bank, or, well, they're in an envelope, I'll deposit tomorrow morning with the foundation, if you so approve. If you don't, the checks go back to them, to the donors, and I'd hate to do that, because the enthusiasm was superb. The remaining amount, I'm confident, I hope that the news banner will give consideration in their article to let people know that they can make contributions as a foundation, and what's gotta be in the memo line. And I would also say, to you folks at the table, we would accept contribution from y'all, if you haven't contributed, we wouldn't turn those down. This is a pretty neat project, as it's developed, both to put some accolades on Norwell High School's achievements, the past graduates and so on. But it's also a way of fans who've enjoyed baseball, basketball, our cheerleaders, our band, to be able to say, "Thanks, we appreciate what you've done." I want to acknowledge that Superintendent Springer did suggest, "You know, Roger, we could probably find the money for this." And I hope that you'll just let the fans just have their say here, and step up and show their support for the kids and coaches, and frankly, for administrators and board members that have made these programs possible. I know the taxpayers paid for them, but it takes some leadership to make them happen, and we appreciate you providing that leadership and that opportunity. Be glad to answer questions. This is the baseball one. Kelby worked with Clint Gerber to develop it. How they chose baseball as a sample, I don't know, but it just happened that way.
It just kind of came out that way.
If you have questions, we'd be glad to answer them. I want to point out a couple of things. As I ran this past others, Jeff Shelton said, "Where's Norwell Knights?" It wasn't on the original, not just you assume. We also came up with the idea that the star ought to point out where Norwell is in the state of Indiana. The signs will be double-sided, it'll be one sign lodged between two posts with the appropriate bracketing and so on, and they're confident that they'll last a long time. So if they need replaced, it'll be up to one of you guys to do that. I don't think I'll be here then, but could we answer questions if you have them?
We have ensured we have not forgotten anybody, correct?
I'm sorry?
We've ensured we have not forgotten anybody with these signs.
In terms of the state championships?
Yeah.
What I know is that I went into Jim, and I looked at the gold ones. And this is all the gold ones. That, that's the best I can do. If there are others, we would want to know immediately, but we've got the cost almost covered on four. But four, we got the sign.
There's anything like there?
I don't know.
Does it make, does it make sense for these to be all individually, does it make sense for them to be all individual or to just be one large, almost billboard? Because it might look weird putting sign after sign after sign.
Or Northwood.
Is he saying the large billboard thing?
Yeah, and then talk about how North, how when you went to Northwood, saw that, how they had the billboard deal.
I got ahold of the state highway, because I heard we put up a baseball championship once, and it got torn down. And the head guy who does signage approvals, as I talked to him, he said, "If you want to see the way it ought to be done, go to Northwood High School." That's at Napanee. Marge and I went there, she took the pictures. I have to tell you, when you see it, I don't think one sign would be, I think it'd be too busy. This is gonna focus on the individual activity and the years there. You put this all on one, I think it's gonna be a hodgepodge there.
I had the same thought.
But I don't make the decision on this.
I got one question. Is there any way you can light them at night, like a solar?
Any way you can what?
Light them at night.
We don't have electricity there, and solar?
Just a thought.
Right, I think we would want to see where we put them and how well that they are.
Yeah. Because I want you to see them.
Absolutely.
That's not a, we didn't explore that. So I don't want to say yes, and that's, again, that's above my pay grade.
And as we think about that, and the lighting and solar, using solar lights to light them, what, I think maybe we don't want to stop with only $600 more dollars. We probably need to keep going in regards to donations, so that we can add some additional things to the signs if necessary.
The other piece is you may, you may want to try to landscape around them.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that Nathan would rather not have to weed whack around them.
And you don't want to weed whack around the vinyl shell over the posts, because it'll destroy them.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's just, again, a testament of, we're really close, but that doesn't mean the donations need to stop once we hit the $700, $700 goal.
Well, I think, any suggestions like that, I'm sure Kelby'd be open to that.
Oh, we'll take mine. Athletic department always welcome to take some extra.
Now, any extra funds will go to the athletic department, is what I've been telling people. And it is through the foundation, so a school authority has to request those funds. And the contract with Ballard Signs has to be from the school district, not, that way it's tax exempt, and that's just the way it ought to be, so. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have to tell you that I strongly encourage you to become better acquainted with how the foundation works. They're great to work with, and they just do a super job.
Absolutely. Is there any other questions on the board?
No. The only thing I would say, because you mentioned it, and I know that the paper will put it in there, but if people aren't reading the paper, when you write a check to the foundation in the memo line, you put Norwell Champion Signs, just saying that audibly for now.
The press received the same package you did, so I hope that would, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Can we call you back up if there's any questions to be addressed?
I can't.
Can I call you back up if somebody asks a question?
I'd like to do that, but I'm gonna take Tracy's place in watching the JV.
Okay, I would assume Kelby can be your proxy.
I can, yeah, I'll go a little bit.
Okay.
I'm also going to Gordia, so.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak?
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Did you guys have to check with Premier Signs for costs? Because I, in my experience, we'll do signs with Ballard and Premier. Premiers have to price at Ballard.
We haven't at this point.
Like, those signs that I'm getting for sponsors, Ballard charges me $110, Premier charges me $50.
I would tell you this, I've told people we're working with Ballard, because that's who I've been working with.
I mean, it just makes monetary sense, right? It makes sense to check with other...
Well, next time it's done, you do it.
Okay.
I'm just giving a suggestion, you don't have to...
Yep, okay. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak in regards to this suggestion?
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Roger.
And so on this, we're doing this, we need to take action. I think, just wanted to get your input on it. I mean, I think we're fine, it's a community effort, and I'm not hearing any opposition to it, right? So, do you feel like you need to take board action? Because it's not, we're not using board funds or doing anything, so.
I think the only, I mean, that would be is, should there be board action related to their placement? If it's going to be placed on our property as a community project?
So what we can do then is we can bring that back on the ninth as an act, on the ninth as an action item for the placement of it. And then we can do it in one whole thing, but like, he's good to continue with the process and deposit it in the foundation, yeah.
I don't have an issue with that.
All right, next item, I just wanted to update the board on the teacher appreciation grant application process. And just to remind anybody that's listening on here, this whole process was changed by legislation, and then we got, each school received guidelines from the Indiana Department of Education. So this was not something that we chose to change. I kind of liked it the way, so the way it was before is, we got a chunk of money, and it was usually around $90,000, that we redistribute between the teachers that were effective or highly effective. And so we had done that in the past. They changed that, and have a whole process, and you have, you have different tiers, and it has to be about showing, having an impact on student outcomes. And so, so Norwell's been notified that we have $86,187 that we can spend, and it's really enough for $24, $35, $50 stipends to give to teachers. And so we wanted to talk about that process, and we had 19 teachers and three administrators met on the 19th to kind of work through this, loved it, it was great. I'm gonna ask Kelly Tucker to come to the podium. She's never going to talk at another meeting that I have again, but she had just a really great... You have it up? But she just...
You have to speak from here.
I know, I get it, I get it. But, but in all honesty, so one of the things, I'm just gonna kind of cue her up a little bit, because she, just really, I'm putting pressure on her now, but she just had a really great statement that she made at the meeting, because one of the concerns when we saw this come down, that has a tendency to kind of pit teachers against each other, and competitiveness is good, but we don't compete against each other, we compete with each other, and that's a pretty important distinction. And so it just bothered us a little bit that it could maybe do this. And so, so far, I'm the only one that's heard, there's probably... that's heard, there's probably another school district I just haven't talked to yet, but I think we're the only school districts that's having some of the applications via teams or grade levels or departments or something, and not all individualized. And so talking to some area superintendents on the individual process, they're saying that it is starting to feel like some divisiveness in the staff with it, and everybody's working through that. And, but anyway, so we have a mixture of it, and Kelly, I don't know if you feel comfortable, just I kind of need you up here, but just kind of to say what you said at the meetings, I just liked what you had to say.
I don't think he wants me to get into kind of the, some of the recommendations we made, but the thing I commented on was that it is quite divisive, and at the high school level, we do not like that at all. As I asked for staff input before I went to the tag meeting, it was very much, we want it to be equal because we're all in this together. And that wasn't just at the high school level, but from the elementary on up to the high school. We recognize that we get credit for kids graduating at the high school level, but they wouldn't graduate if it weren't for those kindergarten teachers who bring them in, and those first and second grade teachers who teach them how to read, and those middle school teachers who get through those middle school years that are so trying. And so it was just very important to everyone that came to me that we work together to make sure that we are not having division among our own staff or among the schools. And so we want it to be as equal as possible so that we can continue to feel good about each other and support each other, because that's what it takes to bring these kids to graduation, is every single one of us working together.
And if you want to get into some recommendations, we can. I mean, I'm going to talk about some of them too. I can piggyback if you want to. It's up to you.
Well, a couple of things we suggested was that, in the meeting, it was that you could, at the elementary, they're probably going to apply as teams. Middle school and high school, it might be applications as teams or as individuals. Other recommendations we made were that if, I think 24%, was it 24% of the staff are at the high school, so maybe 24% of the grant goes to high school, whereas 24, whatever the divisions percentages are, they would go to that school so that it's equal between the school, individual schools. And the other suggestion made in that meeting was that possibly if a person or a group got it, received the grant this year, that they wouldn't apply next year so that, again, more people could get that grant. That's assuming the state continues to do this for another year or two years or however long it is. But those were the suggestions that were made in that particular meeting.
Who does the application? The teacher or the team leader?
The teacher or the team work together to fill out the application, and then you get the fun job of looking at those applications.
So what it would be is you would have, so they'd have a brief narrative that we just talked about, this is the impact that was made. So here was maybe where students started, here's what happened, here's the things that we did to bring about that impact, and then maybe a little explanation on what the data is that you're going to be looking at. It'll just be like a report. So easy ones are obviously for I read, you know, here's the report saying that students have passed I read, you know, here's where they were before. And so there'll be easier ones, there'll be more difficult ones. Had a lot of conversations with sort of related art teachers or like music department or whatever, like, how do we show that? We don't have an I read test, we don't have an I learn test, we don't have SAT. And so, but yet we know it's been a discussion going back four years with the school board that we really want to continue to build our performance arts programs and get more participation in band and chit wire. And that's happening, so is that something that can be, you know, part of their application? So just to go to the timeline real quick, so we had our meeting on the 19th, we're going to have another one on the 3rd. On the 3rd, we're going to finalize that application process, considering things that Kelly just mentioned. And then the goal would be then on January, so we have to submit as a school district, and we would submit that as a central office. Like, you guys don't have to go in there and fill that out. We would do that. But we have to do that by the 30th, by January 30th. And so on the 21st, we would say applications are due, and then I would send them to you electronically, those applications, and then you would have from the 21st to the 27th to kind of look those over. And we can meet an executive session, go over those applications, and then you would, you know, select those and then have them approved at the board meeting that night, at the regular board meeting, and those would be who we select for. So that's kind of the process that we've talked about, just trying to make it as objective and as clean as possible. And it just felt like as a governing board, you know, you've set some goals and kind of some direction for the school system, and so it only made sense then, as you're looking at these applications, on how we're going to then reward, you know, progress towards that, that would be kind of a board decision. That's kind of, to make it, again, as objective as possible. So one of the things I wanted to say that so Kelly brought up, so we have 124 eligible teachers, just based on, so you had to be here last year, all through the school year, you have to still be here now. And so of those, there's 51 eligible pre-K elementary teachers, 33 middle school, and 40 high school, so that ends up being, so 41% of the eligible teachers are elementary, 27% are middle school, and 32% are high school. So that would break down 10 elementary teachers, six potential middle school teachers, and eight potential high school teachers, if we wanted to do it that way. And I thought that wasn't a bad idea, you know, when that came out in the committee, and the committee seemed to like that idea. So anyhow, so thoughts, what do you guys think? I mean, we're trying to do this. Don't love the hand that we were dealt. I get what the legislation is saying in that they don't want to just dole out cash, they want to see results for what they're, you know, incentivizing, so I understand that. I wish they would do it. My preference would be, here's the money, you distribute it how you see fit in your school district, without any kind of guidelines that were given. And then if you don't show improvement on your dashboard or whatever in certain areas, or your grade level drops, or whatever it might be, then you don't receive the money to give out next time, but give the authority to us to decide how we reward. To Kelly's point, that there's a lot of things that go in together for a kid to graduate, or even for reading scores to go up. You have your reading teachers, but you have PD teachers that are working on cognitive development things, and what they do that help kids get better on a reading test that they're not testing on. So there's just whole, that holistic approach to educating a child that's kind of missing in this. So, but we weren't given that, right? We were given, this is how you're going to do it, and you got to fit into it. So I think this is, we've got good discussion on how to make it the best we can. So anyway, thoughts you guys have as a board?
Thoughts from the board?
My biggest thought is, I don't know how to say this right, but it's the board's decision to read through these?
Yeah, it's the board's, it's always been the board has to authorize the tag to begin with.
I don't remember having to do this before.
This is the first time they.
It's the first, we've always.
So with that, I would request that building administrators are there, because, I mean, don't they know?
Well, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to know the applications if you have questions. I mean, I'll know the data, and I'll be able to talk into all of that. But, I mean, now we got administrative too. The idea, and I give it a cover from the face, we were trying to come up with a process that is completely objective in terms of who would be awarded. I mean, it's $3,500. It's not, we're giving them a gift card to Starbucks, right? I mean, it's kind of significant to people, and which is part of why we don't like this either, because it's not just, I mean, that's a significant, you know, stipend that you're getting. And so we just felt like, you know, as a governing board, that, you know, that would be the most objective in terms of just seeing this. And again, overseeing kind of the goal setting and things that you guys have already done, then how does this play into that? That was the rationale. So whether that's the right way to do it or not, I don't know. That just, we were trying to, as we went through the process, how do we make it as objective as possible?
Anything else?
I don't even know what question to ask.
So I, this, two pieces of legislation that's had the most conversation in president's roundtable conversations amongst other school board members has been this and SB1. A lot of them have talked about the, you can't apply again if you, and a lot of them have also talked about why that's probably not a good idea. And I agree with that, is because, well, you got it last year, now I can't get it, therefore I'm not going to work as hard. I think, I think everybody should be qualified, or have the ability to qualify every year if they're doing outstanding work. So I think of the recommendations, that's the only one I don't like, because I think that everybody should be able to reach that level of being able to receive that tag grant every year if they're a rock star. Because I don't, I don't, I want everybody to work at their highest level, and I want them to feel like they're going to get rewarded for working at a highest level. And so I don't, I don't want people to feel like, well, you know, I don't, I'm not going to get this because I got it last year, so I'm not going to really put in that heavy of an effort.
Just to add to that, Chad, so I want to share, an elementary teacher, in the meeting, we talked a little bit more about this, and she made a good point that, because if you're a new teacher this year, you weren't here last year, so you're not eligible. So at the elementary level, if, let's say, second grade all apply together and they win, well the, if they have a new teacher on their second grade team, they don't get it because they weren't here the last year to contribute to the data that they're going. So if second grade is no longer eligible, well, that teacher then isn't eligible. They weren't eligible this year because they were new. So that's something I hadn't, we hadn't talked about openly. She just, as she was processing up to the meeting, she just brought that up, and it was a good point, so.
Yeah, I did, like I said, I just don't, I don't know that regardless of whether or not it's a high school teacher, and it's just the teacher themselves. If that teacher's a rock star two years in a row, then they should have the opportunity to be awarded two years in a row. But I, I mean, I, there are some things that the legislature does that I think we all question, and to the point where some schools had even said that they just weren't going to accept it, and ISBA strongly suggested that they don't do that, because if you take, if you don't take it, then they're just going to take it away. It'll be interesting to see if there's more guidance, if they bring it back up in legislation and make some changes.
I definitely get it. I get if you're doing this to, although I don't think there's anything wrong with just appreciating teachers, right? I think that's what we do. But I mean, if you're trying to incentivize something, I get it, if you're not seeing certain things, you know, get better as a state as a whole, you're like, well, what are we doing then? So I can understand that, but I wish they would give it back to us to then just hold us accountable as a district for results, and let us figure out how we want to share the wealth with everybody. So I get it, I feel like on your faces are a little bit trepidation of being the ones to decide. I get that, but it's got to be somebody, you know, who would that be that would be as objective as possible, I mean, with it? So just because everybody else we could have, would have, you know, if it's just me and Anna, well, then that's only two people making the decision. And if it's a committee, well, there are other biases within that, because you're going to have different representations. So I don't know. I'm hoping other things, I just felt like it was an appropriate role for you guys, but.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Two quick responses.
Yeah.
I don't think you should feel that great a pressure. I don't think anyone's going to be angry with you because you choose someone else.
You promised.
I can't speak for me, okay? The second thing is, I understand your point as well, but I also want to defend at least the staff members that I know that my children had in the school system and that I work with. Whether I get that grant or not, I'm going to keep putting forth my best effort, because that's what this job is all about. We love our kids, we want the best for them, and whether you give me any money extra, I mean, I like the extra money, but whether you give me that or not, we're putting forth our best effort, because that's why we teach.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm afraid that we get back into the same position, why the state restricted it in the first place.
Well, I understand where you're coming from. I just wanted to defend some of those teachers I work with, that we do put forth our best effort.
And we very much appreciate it. We see it.
Honestly, if I could divide it up myself, our bus drivers would get a little bit, our cafeteria workers would get some, our custodial staff, our counselors, because it takes all of us. From the moment they get on that bus in the morning, they're being taken care of, so. But that's not what the state says.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Come on up, state your name and your address.
Jan, I couldn't handle, right down the road. When I saw that on the agenda, I had time to look up the changes in the tag grant. And I appreciate everything you've done, but what do we as a public, if we're afraid teachers aren't going to be appreciated when they're effective and highly effective, and it just goes to a certain few, and others are neglected, how do we contact, who do we contact to tell them we don't like these changes? I have a daughter that is a physician for the VA, and her husband works there. They've made this same thing at the VA, and they're pitting against each other, and it is not, you know, they don't care about the amount, they just want to feel appreciated. And I think we as a public need to know, who do we notify? Because it sounds like it's a two-year deal right now, and they're going to evaluate. So can you tell us?
So Representative Lehman and Senator Holman.
Okay, I wondered if that was it. But I just think everyone should be appreciated, including the bus drivers, everyone that works here.
Just to piggyback on that, you're right, because the other thing, they specifically say for teachers, so even before the changes, it was a teacher appreciation grant, and we couldn't share it with anybody else again, to just go with certified teachers.
That's why I understood it when I researched it.
Even before, yeah.
But she has a good point.
No, great point, absolutely.
Yep.
So that's it.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
All right. We'll be anxiously awaiting those applications in our email. Moving on to 2025-26 administrative salary recommendations.
Yeah, so we held off, so just to go over again, kind of the timeline about things happen. We do our support staff benefits manual in the spring, and the reason for that is, we want people to know what their pay rate's going to be, you know, going, as they finish the school year, going and anticipating the next one, in case that's not going to work for them, or whatever it might be. But we want to make sure people have that. If we can do that with teachers, we would. We're not allowed to. We can't collect a bargain until September, and really even after you get your count, which now is October 1st, so you don't really know for sure. So we're by law, we can't negotiate before then. And so traditionally, we've done administrators, you know, early too, because we can, but we didn't this time around because of Senator Old Act 1, and just not exactly knowing everything's going to play out, and not exactly knowing how the teacher negotiation process was going to go. And so as you know, what you approved as a board was a 2% increase for teachers in the collective bargaining agreement. And so now we're looking at other employee groups and looking at our administrative team. And so, so just, I guess, a little bit of a caveat before we get into the discussion on this, and I'll go through you the bullets, but I said this before, that it just, it almost seems kind of reductive, or like we're talking out of both sides of our mouth, that we're talking about like maybe 10% reduction in education fund and operation fund and all that. But really, it's just about, we're going, we're going to have to do that. But it's about making priorities and where are we, you going to commit dollars to? And that came in the conversation with collective bargaining, like that is, and every role's important. There is every role that we have in our, in our school district contributing to success of children, every one of those positions are important. It's hard to argue, though, that the most important position isn't that interaction between the teacher and the student, like that's where the magic happens, that's where the winning's going to happen. Now, we all do things to support that, to make that happen, but that's where it's happening. And so, so that was really important, that we make sure that we're continuing to take care of our teachers in terms of, you know, collective bargaining agreement, what we're doing there. I think in the same vein, though, I think you look at our building administrators that are managing that, and our coordinators that are managing all of that, and that's pretty important as well. And so, so looking at a 2% increase for our building administrators and our district directors and coordinators, this is not including any, this is not a salary increase for either Anna nor I, so it's not for superintendent or assistant superintendent, that's not included in this. And what we also didn't include Amy, who was just hired on that salary as a newly hired transportation director. Really appreciate Amy's doing a great job, but just looking at people that are, you know, coming back in their position. So that's the recommendation, and just open for board discussion. It would be an action item, whatever we decide, you know, whatever direction we get from this at our next board meeting, but wouldn't have an opportunity to discuss it here today.
Are there any questions on the board?
On the bottom, it says the reduction of the remaining salary. Part of that is a special ed coach. So are we not hiring a special ed coach?
Correct. And so, so another thing, thank you, Corey, for that, because I didn't have it. And so, so another thing, thank you Cory for that, because I didn't, haven't talked about this yet. So we did this a year ago in our December meeting, and we're going to do it again, but Mindy will be here to talk about where we're at, you know, we talked about where we were last year, special education programming and developing, and then where we're at right now. And so one of the things that, that Mindy's going to talk about, just as a prelude to that, I guess, is that, you know, one of the things we really needed as, in the first two years, as we were taking over our special education program, and we had just a lot of profession development that was needed, and just writing IEPs, incentive program, how you set up, you know, intervention groups and all that sort of thing, like that was kind of the first thing. As we're, as we're looking here, now that we don't have the special education coaches, we're looking at the next steps, we really need behavior supports, we need, talked about at the very beginning when we were starting this process, we know we need autism consultants, the best support I ever had as a building principal with five self-contained special ed programs, was autism consultants and behavior consultants. Like, we were very successful, but I don't know that we would have been as successful had we not had those resources with us all the time. And so we did. And so, that's kind of, I don't want to steal the thunder for that, but that's, that's what we're going to talk about on the ninth. And so, so right now, so, so, yes, right now with the cost, that assumes not replacements with that, now there, there are some other replacements that we may need to do, so that may not be a total savings, but right now, that's what we're looking at.
I do have one question. You know, we were looking through this, and we, we talked a little bit about Bluffton and what they compare to. The only thing, I mean, we're right there with them, and we start at the principals and that. The only one is the assistant principals. I notice there's quite a bit of a difference, we're talking 10, $20,000 difference, and I just want to know why we're so much more on the assistants than like Bluffton would be.
Yeah, and I think we were with the last salaries when we, when we increased them, and that's just kind of where we set them. And what we tried to do is, we tried to just have symmetry in our positions, and so it was all kind of an index coming from like, like my base salary, and then there was like percentages or indices, is that the way I want to say that? Multiple indexes? And so, and tried to, tried to base it off of that, and so that's kind of how we, how we set those at the time. I mean, and part of what we looked at though, too, for us, we believe that our, you know, our assistant principals should not be making less than we had at the top of the teacher paid salary, so that was part of the rationale with it, too. And they have more days, and, and it's pretty comparable, honestly, with kind of our guidance counselors that have the same amount of days. You know, I, and we could have done more than just showing a comparison like in your notes with Bluffton, I just thought that was a close one. I think we could look at some other areas, their assistant principals is probably a little bit more comparable than what we're looking at. But that's our rationale for why we said it before, at that, is we just felt like, at the minimum, our assistant principals should be, you know, at, at where a top teacher pay is, and then looking at the number of hour, or number of contracted days and so on.
And I, and I also notice that, you know, and, and our, one of our assistants is making more than one of our principals, is that, is there a reason why one of our principals might be more than eight hours?
And you're looking at the high school assistant?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And so I think, because when you get into the, and Cam might be someone who pulled to the podium to talk about this a little bit more, I guess, Anna, you live the world. So the complexity of, of everything that's going on at a high school level, you know, I think you end up as a, as a, maybe I should just shut up and let you talk about this, but as an assistant principal at the high school, I mean, I think you're, you're in so many different things, it's almost like you're, you're running a, a building, a smaller building, but you talk on that.
Yeah, so, and Cam, you can chime in on this if you want to, but at the high school level, there's all the events that you have to go to, whereas at the elementaries, you really, you know, you don't have all of those sporting events. And I know that Norwell sends an administrator to every event, most of them will wait too, and it's not just all falling on Kelly, the, that they split it up. Now, Kelly's there because he goes to everything, that's Kelly. But when you have, when you get to the secondary level, and you have all of the events, you have to have an administrator go to those events, you know, to maintain, you know, ask questions, you know, answer questions from students and parents, maintain, you know, order, even, you know, and on the away events as well, and there's a lot. We were even talking about the number of days that are awards, and I wrote that down before Mr. Springer addressed, the number of days. Assistant principal of the high school, she's, I, I have to beg her to take off any days, because we have events and summer school that go in through the summer as well, so it's just a little bit different.
Okay.
That's a good question. But it is, it is based on their contracted days, too, and so there's more for that. And obviously, it's the same for me, as an elementary principal, there were high school assistant principals that were salary higher than mine.
I have one more, and you know, I, I went to it a different way, as our athletic director, you know, we have quite a few sports here compared to Bluffton, I was looking at if they're comparable. Something else we had to think about, because you're also talking about the same thing as you're talking about the high school assistant principal, how much more time they're putting in, how many more events they're hitting. I'd have the same question there, you know, because that's, there's, that we keep adding sports on toing to the school, something to think about. There's more requirements.
So it's something to think about in terms of not adding so many sports, or what the salary is?
Yeah, well, I'm saying, when I went to Bluffton, he doesn't handle nearly as many activities as we do, so something to think about, as you, as you compare this to.
Right, right.
Start thinking about it. No, great answers, thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in regards to this? All right.
So we'll bring that back then on the ninth first. Action? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to action items, personnel report.
It's a lot shorter this week than the last meeting. FMLA's Paul Shorrie, teacher at the middle school, resignations, Maria Heelskamp, district sped coach, Jeff Speiser, second shift custodian at the middle school, Brenna Webb, teaching assistant at Ossian, Josh Gerber, assistant wrestling coach at the middle school, and Jessica Singh, assistant softball coach at the high school. Recommendations for hire, Mallory Smithson Reynolds, intense intervention teacher at Ossian, Angela Dean, special education teacher, she withdrew her resignation, Adam Finley, bus driver, Rachel Van Engelhoven, media center assistant at Ossian, Raven Ford, teaching assistant at the high school, Kendall Dunwood, substitute teacher, and Mary Enzberger, substitute bus driver for corporation.
Any questions?
I don't know what to do with Amber Levine, but I appreciate it, whatever it is.
Yeah, and it just, it was just a tough decision for her, and she was kind of throwing it all over, you know, your conversations.
But thanks for making that happen.
Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion, a second, all those in favor, right hand. Thank you. Moving on to donations.
Bollinger Contracting LLC, $250 to middle school board of wars, Ideals Suburban Homes, $200 to high school boys' basketball program, Calvary Lutheran Church, $2,000 to Norwell Food and Serp, food and nutrition to assist families in need to pay for meals, and a thousand, that goes to Austin Elementary, and a thousand dollars goes to Lancaster Elementary. And then overnight, or, well, I guess, no, I'm sorry, I'm getting into the consent agenda wrong, sorry. So that's the donations.
Any questions? Take a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, right hand. Overnight, or out of state trips.
Right, high school arts, out of state trip to the art institute in Chicago, and that's for December 11th. And then high school out of state trip to the U.S. Air Force Museum in Dayton, Ohio, and that's December 8th. So that's a true approval of those.
Who's going to that? The whole high school?
No, it's not the whole high school.
Aerospace engineering, Mr. Holtman.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah, I would try to open it up.
We're all going.
Take a...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, right hand. Items declare no value?
Yeah, so this is, we just have two milk coolers that Raina was able to find buyers for, and so just needed to have the board approve to declare it a value to us, so that she can sell those to the, to the school district that wants to buy it, because we don't need any of them. We have new ones.
I'll make a motion. Oh, I'll make a motion.
Have a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, right hand. Okay. Board policy approvals, 3012.
Thank you, I'm getting organized here with all of them. Okay, so the first one actually is, I think, a pretty easy one, although I did, did make a change based on our conversation the last time, so it's policy 3012, and it's employee reference checks, and again, it just, we do reference checks all the time, we do three, but this is just kind of making it solid that we need to do that. But if you remember, there was something in there about if, that they signed something that we can reach out to, there, like, someone that they didn't put on their reference check. As I tried to wordsmith that, it just got really messy, and to be honest with you, I mean, that's part of the conversation we have anyway, so I don't know that that needed to be in board policy as much as just making sure that we have at least three or written references that we document before we bring a recommendation. Now, if we have any questions at all, like someone said, hey, I want to, like, for example, made the example with, when we hired Anna, Anna wasn't ready yet until she knew it was going to be, you know, final to, to talk to her, her current district. And so, we can still have a process where we make sure we, we reach out and we do our due diligence on things, but, yeah, it just got very messy as I was trying to write that, and I thought, I think we're better just to take it out, so...
Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval.
I'll...
Oh, a second, any questions? Any questions of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor, right hand, those opposed. Moving on to 4322, habitual truant.
Yeah, and I, again, apologize again from the last time, I wasn't anticipating a question, and then we just kind of got muddled in the fact that it's law, and we really don't have a choice, right? So, I got a little more complicated than it needed to be, but, so what I did change in there, so basically on this, it's just, they define habitual truant as, as 11 or more of days unexcused absences, and then it just cites the law that any student that is determined to be habitually truant is defined by school board policy cannot be issued an operator's license or learner permit until the age of 18, or until the student's attendance has approved as determined by the principal. And so, the only thing that really we had a decision on is whether we say is required or may require, and it just seems to me that it, that there's only one way that they're going to know, right, and is if we tell them. So I think the may stuff, we've talked about that before, that just gets very ambiguous, then we're picking winners and losers, and that's no good. So I just think it's required that if someone's determined as habitual truant, that our principals notify the bureau and keep it clean.
And you guys usually get them before they get to that.
Correct, correct.
So that's the big thing.
Yeah, we've got a great process in place, Virginia's position's been great, and, yeah.
Take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To...
Approve.
Have a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Have a second. Any questions, the board?
I, the fact that it's law, I can't argue with, because it was passed by the state legislature, I still just think it's a gross overreach of government, and why we're even thinking about it is ridiculous, but it's law, so, you know.
Any members of the public wish to speak? Hearing none, all those in favor, right hand, all those opposed. Okay, moving on to 5240, homebound instruction.
Right, so if you remember, last time, there were three options to choose from, and we just kind of talked about we liked the third one, so, but with the cabin, I think Cory brought this up, that there needed to be in there, or something about the parents have to request it.
Yeah.
And so I took that from my, I don't remember, I think it was one, option one, and just put that wording in here, so it's after D, it says the parents who qualify and student must request homebound instruction for the child in writing. I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second, any questions, the board? Any questions of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor, right hand. Okay, moving on to 6130, debt collection and forgiveness.
Yeah, and so on this one, we had a little bit of discussion about should we set an amount, and so I just kind of leaned on the part of the policy that says every effort should be made by the school administration to collect the monies owed to the school corporation, including collection procedures. Such efforts must be documented by the school administration before the debt is forgiven, waived, or written off of the school corporation's accounts and considered a collectible account. I just think that keeps it clean, and let's just keep it that way. We've not had any problems with this, it's going, it's gone well for us, but again, it's just a matter of, it's a recommended policy, and I think it's probably a good idea to have it.
And, and for clarity, when we say the school corporation, we're saying the board will make that decision.
Correct, yes.
Take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
A motion to, have a motion for approval and a second, any questions, the board?
No.
Any questions, the public? Hearing none, all those in favor, right hand. All right, moving on to designation of a signatory for the closing documents for the central office building. I know this is essentially an action item, but if anybody has a suggestion, whether I as the board president, or Mike as the superintendent...
I make a motion to have Chad be the signatory.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? That doesn't involve Kathy. Okay. Any questions, the public? Hearing none, those in favor, right hand. All right, last is some limited public comment, is there any members of the public that wish to come up and speak on any topics?[1751.82]